Mr. Maddox, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It is 5:30 PM on Monday, November the 3rd. I call this special meeting of the Kingsville Municipal District to order. We have called Joe Mireles, Brian Kupal, Martin Chapa, David Garcia, Deica Perez, Delma Salinas, and Joseph Reese here. Let the record show that there is a quorum of board members present and that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the government code, Chapter 551, State of Texas Open Meetings Act. We move now to a moment of silence in the loving memory of KISD student Caitlin Bia Bial. We pause for a moment of silence to honor her life. Our hearts and prayers are with her family during this time of sorrow. We now have the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the Techless Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
This meeting will be livestreamed or video streamed. We move now on to item four, public participation. Do we have anyone who wishes to address the board?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on to item number five, communications and from administration. Item A, Superintendent Update, Dr. Us Martinez.
Good evening, Board President and board members and members of the public. Just a quick reminder that we have election tomorrow from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the designated locations. Please go out and vote. In our district, we have a major on the ballot, and so we are going to be monitoring the results of the election as well. Just a reminder to everyone as well that we have six weeks total before first semester ends, three weeks before Thanksgiving. We go out for one week and we come back three weeks before the holidays. So we are focusing on continuing to provide strong instruction to the students in every classrooms. And again, our prayers go for the loss of our students in the CARE Academy. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. We move on now to item B, Energy Efficiency Report. Dr. Peter Pitts can be found on page number three.
Thank you, President Ruiz, Dr. Martinez, members of the board. We spend quite a bit of money in utilities every year, over a million dollars, of which 800,000 is electricity cost. And we have identified several different ways that we can save money. We are working with legal to go out for bids. These are the different methods that can be used to to save energy. First of all, you can do equipment replacement. We're talking new, more energy efficient air conditioners. Second of all, lowering the humidity. When you lower the humidity, it doesn't take as much energy to cool it. So by getting more efficient thermostats and more efficient make a removing of the energy, removing of the moisture in the evening hours, we can also decrease electricity cost. There's also a the more energy used during peak time, the more expensive it is. And so then there's also things that we can do with lighting as well, too, retrofitting, getting more efficient lighting. So there are many different ways to save electricity. And the district is considering going out for proposals and working again with legal to craft it in such a way so that the different methods can be brought to the board that you might want to consider, that can cut into that $800,000 a year in electricity costs. The amount that we pay is very small. We're paying around 4.1 cents per kilowatt hour. We have a rate locked in till 2033. We signed when the rates were low and right now we don't pay a lot per kilowatt hour, but that is only part of the cost, the rate per kilowatt hour. There are fees as well that depend on the maximum capacity that you reach within a quarter. So there are different ways that we can attack this issue. Now, the funding can really be handled two ways. If we need money for, let's say, new equipment, we can either take out with many vendors. They carry the note for the new equipment and you pay them off every year. It's called a maintenance tax note. It's on the operation side. It's not on the debt side, so it's not like going out for a bond election for new facilities. So that's one way that we can do it where, again, they guarantee that the savings will cover the amount of the note and usually you pay it off out of over about five year period. The other way is that we go out for our own funding. We get a note on the operation side, the maintenance and operations side. This is probably the best option if we can get a lower interest rate because then we will be able to take advantage of the savings. How much can the savings be realistically? About a quarter. So you see that $800,000 there. We could save $200,000 of that a year. We will not know until we get the proposals. And usually, once you get proposals, then they have to go look at your facilities. So it's a process where they do an audit and then they bring to the board, this is what we've identified that we can do and this is the savings that the district can expect. And this is how much it will cost the district to do that and how long it will take to pay it off. So I just kind of wanted at the beginning of this process, bring this to you and see what type of questions you have before we go out for proposals. And then again, once the proposals come in, before we do anything, we would bring something back to you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Who is in charge of energy? Do we have any individual that, you know, kind of monitors what the schools are using or the buildings as far as, you know, like you said, the thermostat's being at a certain temperature? The reason I'm asking that is, and I know we're cutting positions, but back in the day, we had an individual here at KISD that that's all he took care of, was making sure that everybody, all the buildings were in compliance as far as thermostats and, you know, equipment or whatever it may be. Is there someone that's?
Currently, that falls under support services and that would, in the future, if the board chooses to move forward, that would fall under the Executive Director of Support Programs.
Thank you.
What Jake is talking about, when we had that energy person here, he pretty much paid his salary with savings and I was going to every facility, checking everything, letting everybody know around the Christmas holidays, things like that. Cleaning your stuff out, because I'm unplugging stuff. You know, he would go to every facility. My next, my question though is, when these people come in to audit, are they going to give you or let you know what they're going to be looking at as far as facilities, you know, like leaking windows? Are they going to be checking for leaks with pressure around doors and things like that, you know?
I'm not sure at this point of the process. When I spoke with legal and we talked about all these different types of proposals, he suggested that we make it general. And some proposals, when we bring it to you, could be that. Some might be just specifically new equipment. But right now, we don't know what's out there. And until we put something out there and then bring it back to you, we'll be able to have more of those questions answered at that time. But as you can see, it's a huge amount of money that we spend every year and it's one that we believe we could save anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000 a year. But again, it requires investment at the beginning. But those can be structured so that's no additional cost. So it just might be the first couple of years of savings are used to pay for the equipment. But again, we don't necessarily know what type of proposals are out there. I've heard several different ones. But until I bring them to you, then we'll be able to ask those questions and see exactly what they're going to do.
So what's the process, I'm sorry, you wait. So what's going to be the process, Dr. Pitts? Are they going to present a presentation to you, to the board?
Well, first, we're going to submit a request for proposals and then we're going to bring all the proposals to you. And they could be many different varieties. Before they even go out and start doing an audit at the facilities, we will bring all the proposals to the board.
One last question. In your experience with a four day, a four day week, 10 hour, does that save energy?
It saved a little bit of energy. The problem is that if you are on those days also cleaning the facility and still need to have the air conditioner on, you're not going to save on those days. So really, to make more use of it, what you would have to do is you'd have to have all of the maintenance and custodians working at one or two of the facilities so you can shut the air off on all the other facilities during that day.
Thank you. I think, Dr. Pitts, we need to look at, there's companies out there that will upfront the cost.
Yes, sir.
Okay, of what needs to be done, retrofit, whatever campus needs to be retrofitted or, and our HVAC system, as much as we spend all this money on them, they're used units up there. And we're just filtering money into a process that is now becoming efficient for us. So that's one thing I would really want you to look at.
Yes, sir.
Please.
You're right, Mr. Garcia, we do have aging infrastructure and it is very costly to replace. And you are right that we just finished two years ago paying off one of those. It's called a lease, a lease of equipment until you pay it off. We just finished a 15-year energy lease. So you have to pay that off every year. But again, the savings you can, you can more than recoup the savings that you're going to get with the new equipment. And then also, as you pointed out, we do not have to spend as much cost on repairing new units.
I don't know if it's possible, but I can ask legal the question. If there's a way that maybe a couple of the board members, Mr. President, can be involved in that, in that process? To know what we're looking for.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, members of the Board of Trustees. We can include you to the extent that we can workshop this extensively, both before and after, to make sure that the proposals capture what you all are looking for as a board and the scope, the size. And then we can have live presentations of the picks with rubrics that you all helped design at those workshops that the administration then utilizes and can bring those potential vendors in for presentations for your selection as well. So we can certainly keep the board included in this process at the board level.
So Nick, could we actually create a, like an advisory board or something where you have, or subcommittees where, I know they've talked about it in conferences, where you have people assigned to say, help look at this stuff. You know, you pick two to three board members. As it's not a quorum, two to three board members that can go out and, you know, see exactly or make suggestions. Is that possible?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Committees are utilized like that all the time. This would be a great one for a facilities committee. And I think that here at Kingsville, we tend to underutilize the board member committees available to us. So, yes, sir, we can certainly do that.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Pitts.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number six, new business discussion or possible action regarding the transition of HM King High School from early college high school to a pathways in technology of early college high school or PTEC. Ms. Jennifer Flowers, can be found on page four.
Good evening, Board President Ruiz, Dr. Martinez, members of the boards. HM King High School currently operates as an early college high school. To better align with the state's college career and military readiness school model and its outcome-based measures of access, achievement, and attainment, the district proposes transitioning to a pathways in technology early college high school. The PTEC model builds upon the ECHS framework by embedding career-aligned pathways, industry certifications, and work-based learning. This approach offers students the opportunity to graduate with a high school diploma, earn workforce credentials, and have the opportunity to complete an associate degree while strengthening partnerships with colleges and local industry. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approved the transition of HM King High School from an early college high school model to a pathways in technology early college high school model beginning in the 2026-2027 school year.
Do we have any discussion from the board? Do I have a motion to accept the recommendation of administration to, from an early college high school to a PTEC high school? Motion made by Brian Kupal. Second made by Martin Chapa. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Flowers.
Thank you.
We move on to item B, discussion, possible action regarding the Lasso Grant Teacher and Principal Stipends. Dr. Peter Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. The Lasso Grant is one of the grants that we were awarded for mathematics. And the four schools that are involved with that are the three elementary schools and also the middle school. The grant is very specific as far as what the allowable expenditures are. Half of the grant has to be used for our partner that we work with. In this case, it is Carnegie. And they come out and they support teachers and instructional personnel in the classrooms. We also, as part of this grant, are allowed to give stipends to those that are involved in implementing the curriculum. So this does not have a cost to the general fund. These employees would be working after school hours on the curriculum. And I will call Ms. Flowers up to give a little bit more description of what they are going to be doing during this process.
So some of our stipend expectations for our teachers would be to stay after school for internalization sessions where they collaborate with their grade level peers, work on internalizing those lessons, and preparing for the upcoming week. One of the other expectations would be to provide tutoring once a week, whether before school or after school. Basically, the after-hours commitment we are asking is roughly three hours a week from, you know, November through the end of May. So that's about 70 hours that we're asking these teachers to work outside of the regular workday. We will have our K through 2 teachers collaborate with their peers on campus. And then we will have our 3 through 5 teachers rotate campuses so that they can collaborate. So on each of our elementary campuses, there's only one 3rd grade math teacher, one 4th grade, and one 5th grade. So this will give them that opportunity to work with their peers and then collaborate so that they can internalize these lessons.
I would think, since it is a grant, that there'll be agendas and sign-in sheets for the training part and the workshop part with the teachers, but also with the kids coming in for tutoring, will they be signing in also?
Yes, and we do have some pretty specific stipend expectations. I believe you guys will be going over in closed session tonight.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So there are two parts to the stipend. One is for actually doing the work after school. And then the other part of it is tied to student growth and there's a rubric for it. Now, I know that on the handout that the board got, it says $3,000 for a stipend. They were able to build up to $3,500 in there if the teachers meet the metrics for student improvement. Again, this is all grant-funded money. And also, the principals will be required to be at these after-school meetings as well, too. And the stipend would be for them as well, too.
So I'm going to table this item 6B so that we can go into closed session to find out some specifics on how much, you know, their teachers are going to get, or the sponsors are going to get paid, or teachers are going to get paid, and also for what variation. So I think it's important that we hear specifics before we make a decision. So I'm going to table that. And then moving on to item 6C, another one that I've been, I've got a few board members to take back to closed session to just get some clarity on exactly what it means, you know, before we actually make a decision. So item 6B and C will be tenable until after executive session. We now move on to item 6D, discussion and possible action regarding the ESC 100 CARES Plan. Ms. Flowers.
It should be me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, item 6, okay.
I'm going to give a little background and then we have a representative from ESC 100 today that is going to talk a little bit about the CARES Plan. So we are moving to a level-funded plan, a plan that we are not held responsible for the claims, that we know how much to budget each year. The cost comes in two different areas. One of them is the cost for the premiums. The premiums, the employees pay a part and the district pays a part. And the other part of it is the CARES program. Again, we, during contract negotiations, we were informed of the CARES program. We were not necessarily informed of the cost of the program or that it was a requirement for being part of the being part of the ESC 100 program. In all fairness, it was, there was one line in the proposal that did talk about the cost for the CARES program. But with all the questions that we asked about this program, this never came out. And when we were negotiating the contract, that's when all the questions came out about this. So we found out about this and we wanted to bring it to the board because it is an additional cost. And the, I'm going to first bring up Carrie from ESC 100 to talk a little about the program and then we'll talk a little bit about the cost involved for the program.
Good evening. My name's Carrie Malik. I am Director of Marketing for ESC. Thank you for letting me talk a little bit about this. But so the plan is really a typical health plan. It's going to be a lot similar to what you have now. The only feature that is not part of your plan now is a CARES program. And basically, what we use that for is to manage claims. And by managing claims, we're able to keep the cost down and you've got a premium now in place that's going to be, you know, determined every year and set. So unlike a cell phone to program where you're kind of a little bit open-ended, this is not open-ended. It's a direct cost. And so the CARES program basically helps out people with large claims. It moves them into a different plan for them and it allows us to manage the cost. That's kind of a basic part of it. And as terms of the cost of it, it does cost a little more to put people in there. So we just don't know at this moment how many people are actually going to be in it. We've just made some estimations. And I believe when I calculated out, it came out to be about another $110,000 or $15,000 in annual cost. But then that cost is pretty much guaranteed as well. So it's not, it's not an open-ended cost. We know for each person, how much it's going to, that goes into CARES, how much it's going to cost you. So that's a defined cost. And if you have questions about how that works, the whole point of it is to manage claim costs so that we can keep rates low and benefits pretty much kind of like we have it now.
Explain to them what would consider someone that would be involved in the CARES plan? You know, what would be an example?
So an example is, you actually have to qualify for it. And you qualify for it by basically basically having claims that are, we know that are going to be large. So if you have somebody who has an ongoing illness, and they're spending, they're in the hospital on a multiple basis, we generally would then transfer that person into CARES. So the benefit is that person's going to have $100,000, $200,000, $300,000 claim. We transfer that complete risk to someone else, and they take all of that risk, and we're out of it, but we, there's a charge for that. It's kind of like a stop-loss or whatever you want to call it, but it's a cost that then covers everything on there. You're completely out of the risk, and it saves the plan money. And so by taking those large claims out, it saves the plan. The old 80/20 rule, have you ever heard the old 80/20 rule? That 20% of the people cost 80% of the money, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to manage that 20%. We successfully managed 20% for a lot of school districts. It's become very popular now, and I think it's going to be a great way for us to manage costs here at King's List.
What was the basic premium amount that was approved?
It was around $2.7 million for the total cost for this particular proposal. And even though Kerry did mention that
I need him back.
That expected cost could be in the range of $100-something thousand. We pushed for a cap because currently, the issue I had, and I worked with legal on this, was that what if they moved every single employee to the CARES plan? Because I was worried about that, and I wanted something in the contract. So because potentially for every single employee, depending on what plan they are already on, it's between $10,000 and $15,000 additional cost to the district for every employee that goes on the plan. It's great for the employees because the employees don't pay any premium, they don't pay any copays, but it is a cost to the district. So when I asked for that, ESC 100 came back with a cap of 26 individuals is the most that we were able to do that. So we're talking worst possible situation, if we had 26 on there and all of them were in the worst possible plan, we're talking upwards of $350,000 would be the maximum exposure of the district. Expected exposure, I expect it to be more in the $200,000 to $230,000 range for the employees that are on the CARES plan. Right now, we have looked at identifying individuals that might qualify, and we're looking at approximately 12 that we are going to interview and see if they do qualify. The baseline is $35,000 of claims within the calendar year. And the ones that they have identified as possibly qualifying were ones that, in the previous year, spent $35,000. But that doesn't mean that their issue could be solved. Moving into the new year, that's the whole reason for the interview. And then there's a possibility of new employees coming onto the plan in the middle of the year. If they get a high-claim illness, they can come on in the middle of the year. We are, again, we are trying to make sure that we do not have exposure over the 26 individuals, and that is being written into the contract. And what's also being written in the contract is if it's over 20 individuals, it's brought back to the board before we add any more onto the plan.
All right, Kerry, you said that by your estimation, it was going to be about $100,000. How many employees did you see? Because
That was based on 13 employees. We just really don't know until we get to talk to them. So we have a district that's about, Greenville ISD is one of our clients. They have about 500 or 600 people. We've only have eight people on it right now.
Yeah, but this isn't linear. I mean, you can't really compare district to district. This is healthcare, and it's, you can't say this company of 500, and this company of 500, and this company of 500 are going to have matching. They're not.
That's true.
Dr. Pitts, what have we been paying for stopgap?
At one time, we paid up to $600,000, but as we increased the individual stop-loss threshold, we increased it from $75,000, then incrementally per year, all the way up to $225,000. Then we were paying $400,000 in stop-loss just recently, last year.
And the individuals that are identified and on this program, the rest of their coverage is comparable to all the other employees? In other words, you got an employee that signs up for Plan A, and Plan A covers X, Y, and Z, and the mother of Plan A gets thrown into CARES. Does the rest of the family still have Plan A?
No, we put everybody in a CARES program. All of their premiums are covered, and all their deductibles and out-of-pockets are covered.
Doctors are still the same? There's no
We try to match them up perfectly, yeah. It's not 100% certain, but yes.
Do you know who the underlying carrier for the CARES is?
Yes, it's Gerber Life.
When will we know? I mean, we've got a disparity, I mean, a range here from $100,000 to $350,000. When are we going to know what the actual dollar amount is?
Well, if we get to interview them this week, at the end of this week.
Okay.
And the plan was to enroll people this week and part of next week, I believe. I can't recall the schedule exactly, but we did have some people, we wanted to start interviewing people tomorrow and Wednesday for the CARES, and we had the names and everything, and we were just going to set them aside and interview them.
And I'm not suggesting any kind of bait and switch or anything, but this is kind of a big deal. How come we're just not hearing about it?
I'm not pretty to that. Just resubmitted the proposal, and it's part of the proposal.
We just discovered it about a week ago, Brian, when we asked about the actual cost. Because we did talk to them about the CARES program in depth, and like Dr. Pitts said, there was one little sentence in the contract about the cost, and the cost goes from an employee-only cost to family cost. Am I correct on that, Kerry?
Well, some of them are already family costs, so it just
Some that are already family, they're going to stay as family cost. So they're going to move them. So if they get involved in the CARES program, they're going to go from a, if they're self-employed, they're going to charge us a family rate for that self-employed person. That's a charge on the CARES. And we're pretty excited about, because we even mentioned it about the CARES during the workshop. And then when we got down to the bottom line about the cost, about the CARES, that's when, unfortunately, Ben, who we spoke to all along, didn't mention the cost. But Peter, who is the guy in charge of the design of the plan, when we spoke to him, he said, "There is a cost." And so as soon as we found out, that's when we came to you all, to let you know that instead of $700,000 in savings, it might be $600,000.
And that was going to be my question to Dr. Pitts. The disparity between our chosen carrier, ESC, and the next carrier was about $700,000?
Yeah. $768,000.
Yeah. So we'll save $600,000.
Do we have any other discussion or questions?
Times three, Brian, because we got them for three years at that cost.
That's correct. We were able to get
Okay, but is this CARES cost, an annual cost that is locked in for the three years also?
Yes, it is.
Regardless of if
Right.
Start with 13 and go to 25?
No, no. So the price is based on the number of employees per person, but the cost per person per month will be fixed for those three years, because it will be, basically be the amount of the family plan. So that will not go up.
That's the key here, is that we're on a fixed premium program for three years, unlike the self-funded. You know, it varied depending on how much in claims we had each year.
And is there any special requirement as to why this cost has to be borne 100% by the district?
We tried negotiating that with them, and the best we're probably going to get is a cap. And he said, "Look, you know, they pretty much said," and I agree, "they gave us a $700,000 savings and premium."
You couldn't really create a substantial
Well, let me finish. With the projected claims that we gave them, because I'm sure he included the CARES premium in there, too. So
You're right, Mr. Escobar. When we questioned them, they said that that is built in to the cost. That's why they were able to offer us such low premiums, because they offer this as a hedge against the employees that have higher claims. So again, it's unfortunate that, at the time, we negotiated in good faith, the person that submitted the proposal is the person that we were talking to. Apparently, that wasn't the person that knew everything about the finance, and when we questioned about this, they said, "No cost to the employee." At no time did they say that the district was going to, was going to bear the cost of that, and that it was going to be the employee and family plan. But they said that that's how they're able to offer such low premiums for the district because they have managed care for this other program.
Yeah. So they calculated the premium with the CARES premium.
Okay, thank you. So
So I guess, like, I guess the bottom line is, instead of the $700,000 in savings, a projected, like, $600,000 savings, and that's going to, I mean, we're going to have to bring it to you all for approval to get that CARES expense included, so that way we can, if you want. Because, I mean, you don't have to if you don't want to. We can stay with that in the two, you know what I mean? But, I mean, it's, we're still going to save $600,000, even with the CARES program, if we get the 15 people on CARES.
Let me, let me see if I can summarize this. To go with ESC 100, we have to go with CARES.
Yes, sir.
We have to.
Yes.
Now, what's being brought to us tonight is that we approve the CARES plan, but we've already approved the ESC, and so, and I get that. I get that this is addition, so, but we don't know what that addition is. So aren't we premature tonight? Aren't we, shouldn't we just wait until we know what the dollar amount is?
Well, if we wait any further than we, see, it's, we have to do, go through open enrollment first, and open enrollment is time-sensitive.
I got all that. But let's say, let's, let me paint this picture. Let's say that we approve it tonight, but then let's say it comes back, and instead of being 100 or 200, then it's $350,000 extra, and you bring it back to the board. What can we do then?
At that point, we're running on a time because our options are limited. Either we pay that cost, or we go back to edna, which will be an additional cost past that.
So the bottom line is, if we approve tonight, it's regardless of what the cost comes back, pretty much?
Up to the cap, up to the cap.
Yeah. The good thing is, we're going to have a cap. That's the bottom line. That'll be our
26 employees, right?
Yes, sir. 26 employees is the cap.
But the dollar amount is per employee?
The dollar amount is per employee, right, but there is
So it comes back at 20 grand of employee?
Oh, no, it can't be 20 grand per employee. If, so, the district currently contributes about $400 for employee, only an employee and children plans are ready. So the cost of the CARES is 1,647. So if every single person that was on there was employee-only, it would be 1,247, times 12, times the number of months. So we're talking a little bit under $15,000, worst-case scenario for each and every one, and that's the worst. But if they are already on employee and spouse and employee and family plan, the district is already contributing a little over $800 to each of those plans already.
And it would go directly to this expense.
Right, right. So in other words, the more people that are already employee and family, and employee and spouse, then it's going to be less than that. So we're talking half that cost for those employees.
Well, let me ask you this. If it's on CARES, then what is the employee paying at all?
The employee is paying nothing.
So if I'm an employee, I want to be as bad as I can.
Do you want to answer that, Kerry?
Well, it's not always that simple. No. I mean, your claims are your claims. If you get sick, you're going to have large claims.
But why can't the employee at least pay what they would be paying had
You can do that. There's nothing to stop you from doing that.
If they weren't put into CARES.
But then the incentive for them to go on CARES goes way down. When they're getting all paid, they all sign up. Everybody gets on that plan because they don't have to pay anything for it. But now you're talking about now charging them a premium for that, and, you know, it just makes it less likely that that person would want to get on CARES. They would stay where you're at, and then that just, that means you pay the claims.
Do you have anybody that has zero CARE?
I don't understand.
Any companies that you, or any entities that you represent that would have zero in the CARES?
Yes, we, yeah, some smaller ones are not going to have people in it necessarily. But generally, we'll get one or two persons that goes into CARES almost every year, even with a group that's only like, you know, 40 or 50 people, we'll have one or two people on.
So if I'm an employee, I want to file as many claims as I possibly can so that I get free healthcare?
No. It, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, you're going to be sick, you're going to pay whatever the bill charges are, and that's really it. You can't go and get extra stuff done. The plan only pays for certain things, generally when you get sick, and some wellness stuff. So it's kind of difficult to try to do that.
It's like your cancer cases.
I got it. But let's suppose that there was a traumatic injury a year ago, that a family did have a large submission of claims. But it's a one-shot deal, a one-year deal, and the next year, they've got normal claims.
You go back on the plan.
Yeah.
You go back.
You're going to get free healthcare for a
That traumatic period of time.
And then you're going back
Then you go back on the plan.
If it's six months.
Try selling that.
It's automatic. I mean, you just, we drop you out of the plan at the end of that period of time, and so you get to go back to the regular plan like everybody else. And we have people that that's happened to.
Okay.
So then those premiums could potentially go down if people come off of the
Well, eventually, they do come off. Not all of them. Some of them leave the district, some of them retire, or they pass away. So there's a lot of different things that create what ends up happening. But we've done this long enough to where we know how to manage it, and we can control the cost through that program. And we're pretty good at figuring out who's going to go on and who's going to come off, and when they come off.
And that determination of going on CARES could be made based on one person of, say, a five-family unit?
That's right. Yes, absolutely.
So that, if it's a child, they could age out. If it's a parent, there could be a
They could go on another plan with somebody else, so they leave, you know, a lot of things can happen.
Okay.
So in other words, they're not hooked into it all the, is, all their career, once they're in CARES. As soon as their care is over, then they switch back to their
The regular
Regular plan.
They come in and out all the time on CARES.
So, and are, at this fee, charge to us is for their enrollment, their claims management?
Yes.
All right, and so there's, there's no other involvement by the district whatsoever?
No, once they're on CARES, y'all are out of it. We manage it from there.
The only part we're in is paying the free, extra premium from employee and spouse, or from employee-only to the family charge. That's what, that's our charge, that they'll charge us if we have someone go on to the CARES program who has cancer, or a terminal, or, you know, something major.
Is that determination made during the enrollment period?
During the interview process.
Okay. So, I mean, you don't have people necessarily, unless they're new to the district, in the middle of the year, there's no effect. It should, it's pretty much January?
We're going to catch 80%. You know, the 80/20 rule comes back into play. We're going to We're gonna catch 80% of all the big claims in the initial enrollment. The other 20% will come out during the year or a new employee.
And is that a hard, pretty much a hard cost at 35,000 in claims? Or is that just an estimate of?
That's our baseline to get started talking to somebody. But generally, we don't even, once we know what the diagnosis is, we can evolve fairly early on.
And so, it's really good for the employees when we explain this to them.
The boys love it.
And so, you know, I mean, unfortunately, we take the responsibility, but during that time of need, it's pretty hard for them to come up with the money that they need to pay for their co-pays and coinsurance and all that stuff. So, I'm just giving you the other side of the coin, that it's really good for the employees. And yes, we're taking it on for a projected 100,000. But again, we have a savings of 700,000 for the next three years. So, I just, you know, we're in a good position at least, you know?
Okay.
Better than we were before.
But we've got, take CARES out of it for a second. We've got this company that we're gonna have Plan A, B, and C. I don't know, maybe more than that. But let's say Plan A, B, and C. And the employee comes in and chooses Plan A because of the deductible and co-pay. And then, it's determined that they really need to go into CARES. So, y'all sell them into CARES, but how is that deductible and co-pay? I mean, yeah, they're getting free, but what are their deductibles? What are their co-pays? Are they in line with that original Plan A, or are they hugely out of?
There's no deductible or co-pay.
They pay nothing. The underlying plans are fairly similar. But it could be a Blue Cross plan. It could be, we just don't know who will take it.
So, the Employee Only, I'm sorry, the district contribution is already being calculated into that 2.7 million that is brought to the board. The only thing that was not included in that is the employee contribution. The employee contribution is what the district is on the hook for, for everybody that's moved to the CARES plan. And again, the employee contribution was $800 and change for anybody that was already on the Family Plan or Employee and Spouse. And it was, it was higher. It was around $1,240 if they were on Employee Only Plan. So, those are the ones. But again, looking at the, at the people that were identified that we're going to interview this week, a lot of them are already on the Employee and Family Plan. So, we had already planned on contributing 800 some odd dollars to their premiums anyway of the 1,647. We should be able to, by the end of the week, give the board an update on, so far, who qualified for the plan and how much money that will cost for the CARES program.
But you're saying we're capped at what their premium would have been?
Yes.
For 26 people?
Yes, for 26 people.
I got you now.
So, that had to is where the worst possible situation, $350,000 if every single one was on Employee Only, which, that isn't the case. So, and if we went all the way up to 26 people. And we have written in there as well that if it goes to 20 people, that it is brought to the board for discussion, if it gets to the 20-person threshold.
So, if the person chooses not to go on CARES, then they would stay in the regular program, but that's gonna have a detrimental effect, potentially, on our premiums going forward?
It could, yes.
Got you.
And on the employee.
And the employee has to pay the out-of-pocket and the co-pay and all that, which is why they never take it. They always go to the CARES program.
And it would not affect our premiums for three years. We have a three-year rate.
That's locked in for three years.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The rates are, we have that written into the contract.
Right, okay.
Legal has looked at it to make sure that our financial interest is protected and that our exposure is capped. So, did you want to say anything about that, Mr. Maddox?
I think you've covered it all. Whenever we discovered it, we went back and forth several times on the contract. I've been through it several times. Dr. Pitts has been through it several times. And we were able to isolate that to 26 individuals. It's very black-and-white language, no questions asked, and with that required notification at the 20 mark. So, we wanted not only a hard cap of 26, but we also wanted, you know, a soft cap where it triggered a notice requirement to the board. And they gave us both of those. So, we're good to go from a legal perspective.
All right. So, do I hear a motion to accept the action regarding ESC 100 CARES plan? Motion made by David Garcia.
I'll second.
Second by Brian Kufal. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We now move on to item 6E, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Health Insurance Terminal Liability Option with ENNA, Dr. Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. So, we've discussed this before. We need protection for our run-out claims. So, that would be somebody that was, let's say that near the end of December, they had an illness or injury, and their claim was not processed until afterwards. Or, let's say that they continued receiving care for that particular injury, and they went over their individual stop-loss to cover us, going over the individual stop-loss amount as well, too. For ENNA, the estimated cost is 112,000. I believe December 3rd is the actual cutoff date. The actual cost depends on how many people are on that plan. December 1st of 2025 will be the actual cost. But the estimate right now, if we included the people that are on our plan right now for run-out for ENNA is $112,000.
And, gentlemen, I think that's pretty cheap, 112. So, because we're gonna have to pay the claims anyway because we're self-funded. So, I mean, that's a pretty good projection at 112.
All right. So, that would cover all claims?
Okay. So, no, that doesn't cover all claims. That will cover claims, that will cover claims that put us over the individual stop-loss. We still are responsible for the claims from the previous year. But that gives us a stop-loss protection, and they continue to administer those claims. So, it covers those two things. The increase above the individual stop-loss and administering all the claims for those employees. But again, if there's a claim that is under that individual stop-loss, we're still self-funded. That's still a self-funded plan. We are still responsible for that claim.
All right. We've been self-funded, which means we've been carrying reserves for specific health insurance.
Yes, sir.
What is the current and or projected balance of those reserves at some point in this policy?
$219,000.
Totally enough.
So, there's not a lot, but that health insurance fund balance, that can be used toward the premiums as we go into. We're not gonna waste those funds, so. But there is not a lot there. We have been, we have been funding the plan by premiums that the district pays. We take out of every paycheck. But then, we still are responsible for the claims. So, we have had to put in extra money from our fund balance, and it has gone down significantly. So, there's not much left there. But the advantage of this, except for the CARES program, we know how much to budget. And at least with the CARES, we have a maximum expenditure of $350,000. Probably a more likely scenario, maybe half of that. But at least we have a cap where we know the maximum that we're gonna pay, which is still significantly less than what we have been paying recently.
And of course, these are just estimates. It doesn't necessarily mean that we're gonna pay this out. It could be a lot better if we don't have.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Absolutely. If we have less employees on the CARES plan. I just wanted to come up with a cap, and they came up with a high cap that's way more than either of us think that it's going to be. But they wanted to, they wanted to hedge their bets, just like we're hedging our bets as well, too.
Any other questions from the board discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the administration's recommendation regarding the health insurance terminal liability option with ENNA? So, motion made by Jake Pettis.
I'll second.
Second by Delma Salinas. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We now move on to item 6F, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the 2627 Plauro County Appraisal District Board Resolution, Dr. Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. So, there are a total of 5,000 votes that are cast for the appraisal district board nominees. So, we control 1,627. We can either apply them all to one candidate or we can spread them out amongst candidates. Again, this person will be serving a two-year term that will start January 1, 2026, and then December 31, 2027. I will take any questions.
Dr. Pitts, how many do we need to get in? I think we had already made two nominations, is that correct?
I can clarify this, if you'll allow me.
Yes, sir.
There are five candidates, and there are five positions. So, if one vote gets anybody in?
I would say that as long as each candidate gets at least one vote, that each of them are gonna be on there. If a candidate gets no votes, I, maybe you can clarify that for us, Mr. Maddox, what would happen in that scenario?
Actually, I can, because by the bylaws of the appraisal district, what would happen in that situation is that you would have a board of four that would appoint a fifth, which would be that fifth person.
But regardless, we still do have to proportion our 1,627 votes.
So, are we proposing the numbers?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Should we divide that number by five?
We could, if you wish, to give it to all the candidates. There would be two votes left over that would need to go somewhere.
We can go and divide it.
Okay. So, split them equally and give the other two votes to Mr. Kufal.
So, do I have a, do I hear a motion to accept the action, okay, Plauro County Appraisal District Resolution, which would be dividing the votes equally and giving the remainder two votes to Brian Kufal? So, the motion was made by Martín Chapa. Second by Delma Salinas. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Now, I'm on to item 6G, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Senate Bill 546, Three-Point Seatbelt Requirement, Dr. Pitts.
Thank you. So, there is a new Senate bill that is requiring three-point seatbelts in buses. Dramatically increases the safety. There is a significant cost for it. So, boards are asked to do one of two things. They are asked to either, number one, say that we have funds and allocate those funds. Or, number two, to say that we don't have funds for that. And then, we have been told that there will be a DEA grant that we can pay for that costs for, that allows us to defray that cost to get the seatbelts paid for. So, estimated cost is $570,000. You see the buses there? Which ones already have seatbelts, which ones don't have any seatbelts, and which ones just have lap belts in the estimated cost? We are required to submit this by the end of the year, and the board is required to vote to make a, it's called a budget limitation determination, whether we have money in the budget to do that or not. Our administration's recommendation is that, the budget limitation determination is that we don't have money in there for that so that we can apply for the grant. We do have a few years to, I believe it's 2029, that we have to become compliant. But we do need to make this budget determination limitation this year.
Almost definitely with the fund balance going down, and us probably falling below the requirement, I think, you know, funds are, you know, our budget's limited. So, I think we should go after the grant if we can. Quick question. When you say complying, Dr. Pitts, are you meaning that all buses need to have a three-point harness?
Yes, sir. By 2029.
I'd like to, we started looking at purchasing new buses. Make sure that in the cost, Dr. Pitts, is those seatbelts are already.
So, one thing I want to point out is, if you look at the, if you look at the vehicle fleet, then you see there, the new buses already have the three-point harnesses in there. So, like, look at the 2023 buses. They have the three-point harness. The 2026 bus has a three-point harness. And further down, the 2023 bus has a three-point harness. The blue represent our special education buses, and the yellow represent our regular education buses. But, yes, now those are becoming standard. And I assume that only buses that we buy moving forward will already have the three-point harnesses for seatbelts. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Pitts.
You're welcome.
So, the grant that we're applying, would be applying for is to equip our existing fleet with those three-point seatbelts?
Yes, sir. And we haven't, we haven't been given any details on the grant yet. Right now, everybody is just making the budget limitation determination. Then we're sending all the information to DEA of what we would need to equip it. And then, after that, they're using that to build the grant. Again, we've got a couple more years to become compliant. But right now, the thing in front of us is just to make that budget limitation determination.
Was that the 1992 Bloomberg, an in-town vehicle only, or is it running at all?
That is an in-town vehicle, yes. But it still runs, believe it or not, pretty well.
1992 was a great year, sir. Produced a lot of great people. That's what I'm here to. Okay. So, is there any more questions or? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of administration regarding Senate Bill 546, Three-Point Seatbelt Requirement with the inclusion of the budget limitation?
So, we want a budget limitation determination that we are not able to, within our current budget, afford these upgrades.
So, is there a motion? Motion made by Jake Pettis.
Second.
Second by Joe Mireles. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. The board, move on to item 7, Close Session. The board will now enter into closed session in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.074, to deliberate and consider the following. Item A, deliberate regarding the employment of contracted personnel, director of school improvement. Item B, consider and deliberate regarding the employment of contracted personnel, executive director of support programs. And item C, consultation with legal services regarding the legal matters. No action will be taken until we return to open session. We are entering closed session at 6:34 PM. We are entering closed session at six-thirty-four P.M.
We are returning to open session where we can discuss and take possible action on the following items. We are returning to open session at 8:08 PM. Item A B, discussion of possible action regarding the employment of contracted administrator, director of school improvement. Is there a motion to accept the administration's recommendation? Motion made by Jake Perez. Second by Brian Kufal. All those in favor say aye. Any oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Item A B, discussion of possible action regarding the employment of contracted administrator, executive director of support programs. Is there a motion to accept the administration's recommendation of this employee? Motion made by Jake Perez. Second by Joe Mireles. All those in favor say aye. Motion passes six one. I believe there's no legal matters to discuss, Nick.
Mr. President, we need those other two items.
Okay, that's very good. Thank you so much. I'm hooked on the convo here already, so I apologize for that. Going back to item six B, discussion of possible action regarding the Lasso grant teacher and principal stipends. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation made by administration?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the recommendation to approve the Lasso grant teacher principal stipends with the criteria outlined to us by the superintendent.
Is there a second? Second made by David Garcia. All those in favor say aye.